At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
All right, we're going to call the study session to order. And I'm looking to see, I put my stuff together backwards, I think. I guess I don't have any... Perfect, yeah.
Just preview agenda?
Review agenda, okay, that's why I don't have it. Anything on the consent agenda? We are going to hold off on 4A until the end, although it won't take us too long to go through the agendas, but we want to make sure that people that are here for other reasons can take off if the discussion takes a while. So, anything on the public hearings related to 4B or C? Anything on ordinances for first consideration? Ordinances for third consideration? Anything on the resolutions? Permits and cancellations?
Yes. Regarding the rodeo saloon, Chief, you anticipated my question. Sorry? I didn't hear you.
I thought we were going to get out quickly.
Oh, well, hopefully it's not.
Depends on how much you talk.
Has the owner proprietor of the business contacted you? There were a fair number of incidences, and I know that's in that area, general area where we've had some discussion, and I didn't know if there'd been any discussion on further improvements.
It has. We have a continuing discussion going with the management from Hounds and from the rodeo. We had another incident on the 10th at Hounds or outside of Hounds. There's some question as to whether the person was inside beforehand or not. My night shift staff is actually monitoring that very closely to make sure that everybody's in compliance and the neighborhood grows and develops like we've talked, but we continue to pay attention to it.
Okay. Do you have any concerns about, at this point, renewing their liquor license?
I don't have any concerns at this time renewing this license. We're going to monitor this. If we do have issues, just like the other establishment, we'll come back to you and present those at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else on the permits and cancellations?
There were no other violations, so...
Sorry?
There were no other violations on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw. Thank you, Chief.
No, go ahead. Anything on the agenda in general?
Did we want to hear about, does anybody want to hear, I know Sharon's here, about the pollination garden, or do we want to hear more about that, that plane, or are we good with what's... I heard about it because she told me, but I didn't know if anybody else had any curiosity.
No, but I think that since she came down here, I'm, I think...
If you'd like to speak, you're certainly, we'd certainly love to hear it if you'd like to.
Well, I'm Sharon Bavin, and I'm president of the Fairmont Park Neighborhood Association, and we are...
Hold the presses.
...churned with, with what our neighborhood looks like, and we've got some empty lots up at the top of park, which we'd like to do something about. I want to remind you all that they are city-owned, and we understand that, and we want to plant wildflowers. Our president or chairman of our committee is going to talk to you about that. But if it doesn't work out, we just replant grass, goes back to you guys. So, how can you say no?
And we understand that at any particular moment, it could be sold and built upon. We understand that. But for right now, the grass grows fairly high, and it's cut a couple of times a year. Our thought is that we would plant spots of wildflowers with a six, six feet wide with a six-foot strip of grass between them. By the time the wildflowers grow up, you won't even notice the grass. This will keep down on the soil erosion, and it'll also kind of, well, it'll be a barrier as far as keeping grass where it needs to be and things. We do notice there's already some erosion of soil, it's down on the sidewalk. But this would be a mixture of wildflowers that we would order from La Crosse Seed in Ankeny, Iowa. It's going to be pure seed, and it's approximately $30 a pound. It's not a whole lot. So, basically, that would be the cost that we would be out of. We've spoken with Duke Kilnowski, and he has agreed to till up the ground in those six-foot wide swaths for us, and so he would pretty much be doing that. We would be spreading the seed and understanding that we need to keep mowed the area between the flower gardens as well as the border around it. So, what we're anticipating is a garden space of about 60 by 90 feet. There's an unplantable area because of the canopy of the trees to the east end of the lot. But we think it would look rather nice, and we would like to attract hummingbirds and bees especially. Of course, they're very necessary to our, you know, population, pollination type thing, and so, anyway, they seem to be disappearing. So, we'd like to give them a habitat of their own. Our neighbor to the north is Lucille Dunlevy, and she is completely on board. She has agreed to allow us to use her water, so we have a water source.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Sharon, you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else on the agenda other than 4A? Anything on 4A?
Give everybody a minute, anybody that doesn't want to stay.
Yeah, if, that's the end of the agenda except for 4A. If you're not interested in 4A, you're more than welcome to leave. If you want to stick around, you're more than welcome to stick around, so...
You're not riveting by this?
All right. Any questions on 4A?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I had a few concerns I wanted to discuss, and maybe there were three of them if week four, actually. The first is, I was wondering if we might seek an assurance as to either the times, that is the days, or the times, days of the week, or times, if it's, if certain times are being set aside to...
Marcia is the, sorry to bother you, but they're saying they can't hear, or the...
Oh, oh, you, sorry. Am I not...
Just pull down.
Can you hear me? That's better on, sorry, I'm not speaking close enough to it. The, the first issue is whether it's, whether it's to be the days of the week, and I very much appreciate the assurances that, particularly in light of the relatively low median income in the community, there are a lot of kids whose folks can't afford to take them to lots of these sorts of sporting opportunities. Is the assurance more the days or times, or is it opposed, or is it the other regularly occurring times, but that there will be a scholarship program to, for the costs? I've seen a number. I was curious to see if that would be, I would like some assurance as to commitment, as to roughly how many, whether it's days of the weeks, or it's a dollar subsidy, what, what more of the details would be as to how many that would serve, when it would be? Because I very much share the belief that this, this is not only a moneymaker for those with means outside the community, but also those, the considerable number of kids in the community who do not have such means available to them. And so, and I share that, that hope, and I'd like some assurance, some more detail about what specifically we would be getting as part of this deal that the taxpayers would be striking. That's, maybe I'd...
Go direct to somebody.
Well, from the, is there someone here on behalf of the applicant?
Mac Ventures.
The Mac Ventures LLC.
And just for the council's information, as the questions came in to me last week and today, I forwarded them on to Pete, so he's familiar with most of the issues that you have raised, and I'd ask him to be here today to respond to questions.
Thank you, I appreciate, and I appreciate you coming.
Sure, you're welcome. Pete Tulipana, 125 Traders Point Circle. Am I supposed to do that today at this as well?
You're good.
So, your question is about assurances around the use for low-income, modern-income kids for the Field House.
Yeah, yeah, what more details? I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's two ways that we have addressed that. First of all, the owner of Field House, or the person who'd be providing the services for Field House has said, and he'll be here tonight to answer any direct questions, that no child, regardless of income, disability, will ever be turned away from Field House. So, he has written that and said that publicly. In addition to that, the Iowa West Foundation has agreed, based on the need, we've had conversations with especially the kids who are coming out of the Council Bluff School District, because they tend to be the lower-income kids, that we would work with them to, if needed, to set up a scholarship program to make sure that they had access to the gym on an as-needed basis. So, the, the idea is twofold. First of all, that club kids from throughout southwest Iowa are already paying for this gym access over in Omaha. So, our real interest on, on the foundation side is to make sure that, in fact, we have resources, we have a commitment from the provider, and we have resources available for those teams and those kids to use the facility, and we have made that commitment.
The, the second, while you're there, if I may, the, the second issue I'd like to raise is, could we get, I very much appreciate the two resolutions of support from the Iowa West Board, I think they're very helpful. Could we get it couched in the language of, and it's probably the lawyer in me, but the personal guarantee, because we're dealing with the LLC, and I don't mean to imply that the creation of the LLC is in any way inappropriate. In fact, it would, it would be the way I'd advise a client to proceed with, with an arrangement such as this. Saying that, however, in the seat I'm sitting in, I would like to have that assurance of a personal guarantee, as it were, from the foundation on behalf of its LLC, that, that the taxpayers, in the unfortunate event that, you know, this, this weren't to succeed, that the taxpayers wouldn't be on the hook for costs. So, I appreciate the, very much, the resolution of support, but for it to be legally binding, in my opinion, it would have to be in the nature of a guarantee. Is that something that the foundation would be willing to entertain?
I would, that would have to be a decision that would be made by our Board of Directors, obviously.
Sure, I appreciate that.
You're, you're asking for, just to be specific, you're asking whether or not the foundation would guarantee what exactly?
Well, the costs, for example, if, if in the unfortunate event this, this were to lose, to lose money, I just want an assurance that the taxpayers wouldn't be expected to pick it up.
Yeah, the actual building will technically be owned by Mac Ventures. The only member of Mac Ventures is Iowa West Foundation.
Sure.
So, I, I think legally, it would be Iowa West Foundation as the owner of Mac, as the sole member of Mac Ventures who would be responsible for the building.
Well, actually, and, and I slightly disagree, maybe it's just the perspective I'm coming from, as, as a, the owner, complete owner of the share interests, if you will, in it, you're not liable for the business per se. So, that's where, I, I would like a guarantee that it would be.
Okay.
And I appreciate that you have, in effect, said that it would be. I just would like that tied up so for future councils, that, you know, looking forward to the future, that there'd be no question as to that, if in that unfortunate event, which I don't foresee happening, but again, that's just me with the lawyer hat.
Okay.
And so, I have an understanding, I'll keep notes. So, you're wanting the Iowa West Foundation to guarantee the performance of Mac Venture as, as their obligations in this agreement?
Yes, that's, that's all I'm seeking. In essence, just to put into the legalese, the assurance they've already graciously made. I just, to make it binding for future councils is all I'm seeking, and I appreciate you willing to look at that, and I know you can't speak for the board, I appreciate that.
I can't, I would just say that I can't see, I think it's, the Iowa West Foundation Board has every intention of honoring everything that...
Oh, and I don't mean to imply otherwise, it's just me thinking into the future to avoid any doubt, is all I'm seeking. And then I had one more, or two more, actually. Bear with me a moment as I find...
Please. Is that something, probably not the board can't do before the council meeting, where you have a guarantee to us?
I don't see how we could do it before the council meeting tonight. You could, I suppose you could say that's...
We could make a contingent, couldn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Suppose if that were something...
I know you can't speak for the board, like you said, but you think that's something your board would be...
I can't imagine why our board would not be willing to stand behind the commitment that we're making to the community. I mean, I think in essence, we've done that by publicly saying that, you know, if it doesn't work out, it's, we've kept the building for those reasons, the building belongs to us, and our intent in the conversations that we've had thus far is, for whatever reason, Field House USA doesn't work out, then we've got a building, and we figure out how we run it as a community, for, as a community center. The issue with that then becomes the ongoing operational costs of that, of that. But I think it's been, it's been a part of our conversations all along that the reason to keep the building with the foundation is that if there's a problem, we still have the building here in the community to serve the community.
If I may, another question. I appreciate, again, the, the resolution about the funds that would be turned back. As I understand it, it would, it would be to allow the cash flow, if you will, to allow the foundation to continue to give its normal grant-making cycle, because this would be a lot more upfront than you normally would.
Correct.
And so, so it's not so much that you'd be keeping the funds or using them for other purposes, it would be so that, because this is such a lot of money, relatively speaking, upfront, if there is no turn-back way, then you're out of the grant-making business for years, I imagine, conceivably.
That, yes, yes. $13.7 million is, would decimate our grants budget for at least a year or two, given all the standard commitments that we already have in the community.
Sure.
Probably closer to two-plus years.
So, the, so the funds going back are to allow you to continue to do this project and to continue to do what you would otherwise do if this project wouldn't?
Correct.
All right.
And also, I think the commitment that we've made, and part of the reason that we've made that commitment is, is as we're looking down the pike and looking at the things that we are already planning to partner with the city on, i.e. the Riverfront, West Broadway, and I mentioned, I think we mentioned, that we do have a task force that's meeting right now to look at indoor soccer. Those are three things that we have teed up, and the, these monies would be coming back into those projects as they come into us.
When the, the funds back to the community, could you define, I remember that being in the resolution, is, could you, could you define for me? I had some folks with questions asked, you, when you say "community," are you referring to the city of Council Bluff, are you referring to nonprofit or otherwise eligible activities within the city of Council Bluff, are you referring to Potawatomi County?
Yeah. I think the way we, the intent behind that was to frame that with regard to city and, and Iowa West Foundation projects that we have agreed to partner on.
Okay. Do you, you know, if, if, if we were to ask the board just to make that doubly clear, do you think that's something you could take back and they might entertain?
Those are projects that, that we've, the take back that, that we are committed to, making sure that those funds come back to projects that are part of the city, a partnership between the city and Iowa West.
Yeah, I think that's what was intended, but I, again, it's just me parting, just wanting to remove any doubt or misunderstanding.
You bet, yeah. I think, I, that was my intent, that was the intent of the conversations that we've had, and I think, yes, we could clarify that.
The actual verdict states that, let's see, the Iowa West promises that amounts equal to TIF rebates and hotel motel tax rebates will be directly invested with the city of Council Bluff on city projects.
Where is that? Sorry, I maybe missed something.
Is it in their resolution?
Nate, while you're looking at that?
Please, please.
Can I ask about, because it's about the same thing, so we may as well do it once? We did have a good question come up today. That's Iowa West Foundation made that resolution, but this agreement's with Mac Ventures. I don't know, Dick, I briefly asked you if we need to somehow bridge that gap, but I don't know how. Would now be, Dick, a good time to talk about that, too?
I'm sorry, I missed your point.
Those say Iowa West, those resolutions.
Because those resolutions, and so it's two different...
Well, I think the personal guarantee would cover that.
If you get a resolution, a third resolution passed by the Iowa West Foundation, essentially guaranteeing everything that the...
And it would cover...
...Mac Venture is going to, probably need to do under the agreement, I think that gets us where we need to be.
Yeah, and, and on that point, I've been helpfully pointed out on the resolution that it already does say that in a point that I've forgotten, so scratch that one.
Okay, good.
And the resolutions state that Iowa West Foundation as Mac Ventures, so...
It does, I just, somebody kind of questioned...
I think the personal guarantee would cover all that, and they, and the other, the only other issue frankly I had would probably be better addressed by my colleague, who I think could probably speak better to it as to the parking. I think that was an issue that we've discussed, the two of us.
Just want to make sure, and Sharon's concern was the parking also, that it is somewhere that, where our city parking of the Mac Center versus the parking for this facility and the hotel? Where there's a line, I mean, are citizens going to drive by and see city plows plowing there and call us, is my question?
Yeah, the, the way I understand it, the hotel parking is specifically designated for the hotel and maintained by the hotel completely. That's their responsibility in the agreement that we've drafted thus far. For the Field House, the parking is shared parking for the whole Mac area, and that part of the parking, that, that way, the, the arena and the Mid-America Center uses that parking, the Field House uses that parking, and that was part of the negotiations that we did with Field House, because we did not want to segment out Field House parking. We thought that was a, could be problematic down the road. So, that parking is shared parking across the board for, for anyone who comes in there.
Yeah, and my concern on parking was only the hotel, because the hoteliers were making the point that they have to plow and maintain their parking lot, and this hotel should too. So, as far as the sports building, I understood that that would be shared with the Mac. That's why we had the agreement with Horseshoe that we could use overflow over there, because if we designate it just to the sports complex, a certain amount of parking, then when the Mac's got something going on, they wouldn't be able to use it, so...
And for the thousands of citizens that won't use the Field House USA, they subsidize that parking essentially, I guess?
Well, boot.
It's parking...
Oh, we use it for the Mid-America Center.
We use it now. We're plowing it now, right? Or maintaining.
We're using it and plowing it. And going forward, we'll be using it and plowing.
So, there's no additional?
Yeah.
No.
There would be slightly less because of the footprint of the building.
Right.
And just for clarification on that, the Caesars, as management company, contracted a private soil remover to actually take care of that, those issues, and then that comes out as part of the operating costs of the Mid-America Center.
Some kind of ancillary, tangible benefit is that that parking lot completely needs to be replaced in, at the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and wouldn't it be if there's a building in it, so it saves the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Awful parking lot.
Yeah, because that has to be addressed sooner than later. I know that there's been some patching done, but I literally saw where it's semi...
Oh, you'd go down and look today.
...gone all the way through the asphalt and into the mud.
Well, there are parts of it that aren't even an inch thick, they don't even meet residential sidewalk requirements, so that's...
You're exactly right.
We can't keep bringing it up.
We can't let that happen, or happen again. The, the other issue is the, I'll defer again to my colleague Roger as to the, the fee that would be paid by the operator of the facility. He had a point, I think, that I was curious to hear about, if I may ask him.
And you got, you've seen these obviously as well, which I, I just found them today. The agreement between Mansfield, Texas and Frisco, Texas on, and it, I agree, every deal's not the same, but their deal is a little bit different, and the cities both own the facilities versus Iowa West owning the facility. In they, both those agreements, they are paying more, an extreme amount more than a dollar a year. And from what I've heard from, from yourself and your president, that they are planning on losing for the first couple of years.
Yes.
And in, in another agreement with Mansfield, Texas, they are paying a $300,000 a year for the first five years rent.
I learned that, I was, that was reinforced. It's been a while since we did those negotiations, but yes, I believe that's accurate.
Well, yeah, I've got it right here. $300,000 a year for the first six years, up to 25, continuing through at least year 25, and then in year, it says beginning in year, where's that?
I believe part of the reason for that is that the contract between Field House and the city is that they run the city's recreation programs in that Field House, and I believe that's part of how that was negotiated, and as, as a part of that negotiation, the rent that went back to the city, it's actually a city-owned facility as opposed, and the city has the responsibility for that as opposed to, and we, we did go through these negotiations with them and came up with the best deal that we think is going to make this work in Council Bluffs. And since it was Iowa West Foundation funds and not city monies, it's not, it's technically not a city entity, it's a private entity. That was the deal that our group brokered with them.
So, I don't know Mansfield's bond rating, but we're estimating 2.95% for us. That building costs 12 million, so I'm assuming they borrowed 12 million. If they paid 3% for simple math numbers, their annual interest expense would be 360,000, and they'd pay 300, and so they go 60,000 in the hole each and every year, the first five years.
Yeah.
They catch up a little years five through 10, but, but then, as we found out, in years five through 10 is when the maintenance expense kicks in, so...
Well, year six through 20, through, year six through, year six through year 25, it's 500,000.
Which I'm assuming is related to the ongoing maintenance costs of replacing, and, because again, it's a city-owned facility, and I'm sure they're trying to make sure...
Actually, it goes down after 25, because the city maintains the property.
Oh, they do, okay.
The city maintains it.
Okay.
So, it goes down after 25, because that's when, you know, some of those bigger expenses start to come into, into play.
Did they have in that agreement, because again, we got it too late to really analyze it, but did, how much did Field House put into that building financially? I mean, did they put in all the equipment, the interior finishes and all the dollar amount they'll be putting into their facility?
But it was pretty extensive, I didn't see it.
I didn't see that they put...
I didn't see that.
And again, that's why it's really hard to, for me to look at, you know, I tried to review them, but I know every deal is so different that, you know, that $300,000 a year, if they didn't have to put in any of the equipment or interior surfaces, where if I understood the email, I think you had asked that question, what was their skin in the game? So, you know, it's very tough for me unless it's all, I don't know how that impacts...
It does say, and I want to clarify that, too, in, in our agreement, it says furnishings to be provided as well.
In our, the, the, the agreement that we have with Field House is that we build the building, they, and we provide the things that can't be moved out of the building, and they provide everything else.
So, that would be the court, the hoops.
Well, I'm assuming that the court can't be moved out of the building, so that would be a part, that is a part of the construction. When they leave, we want the facility to be able to be run as a community center, if in fact, without having to put more money into it.
I hope it's if they ever leave, I hope it's not when.
If they were to ever leave.
I imagine we all do.
Well, we all have good intentions, but that, it does say furnishing somewhere in our agreement. Dick, I don't know if you know where that's at, that will be provided? So, I guess, can we...
Covers furnishings in the agreement?
Well, the city doesn't.
No, the city doesn't, that's a big thing.
It wouldn't be us, I just...
But didn't you get a dollar amount, didn't we get an email with a dollar amount that they were actually investing out of their own pockets in this? And that was my point.
I think it said 1.5 million.
Right, and that was my point, not what the 1.5 million covers, it's just that we don't know, or I don't know in that agreement, did they have, you know, was it all, did they put any money into that agreement, or is that why they're paying the 300 a year? You know, I like, and I don't have the math, you know, banker's math, so all I did was just add up, you know, the lease on it at 300 a year for the first five years, and 500 a year, they still haven't recovered their investment, and that's not, and that's without interest, so...
From six to 25 for half a million?
Well, no, from, they don't, that was if they stayed. It was the five and then the, from five to 20 that I added up. So, you know, after that, you're talking about 45 years later, whether they got their investment back, I don't know, I didn't go that far with it, because it seemed a little extreme, but in their first 25 years, they would not have, if I added, if I did my math right, they would not have their full investment back without interest, because their full investment was 12, and the way I had calculated it is that after the first 25 years, they wouldn't, because they'd get back 100, what was it, 11.5, I think, is what I came up with.
I, I think it's important to, well, two things. First of all, we examined several different ways to, to address this, including just coming to the city and saying, hey, do you want to bond and, and build a community center like this that would include both a soccer and a, and we would give some money to that and have the city bond to it. The problem is, well, first of all, you know what you're dealing with, with the police department, so that's probably an unlikely scenario. Second of all, if we had given, asked the YMCA or someone else to run this facility... Second of all, if we had given, asked the YMCA or someone else to run this facility, they're going to bring a very local piece to this, they're not going to bring the, the revenue piece that's tournament-based, because these people have the expertise to do that, that generates the money that allows the, the, the operations to be covered on an annual basis without someone, the city or Iowa West Foundation continuing to subsidize it year after year. So I, our intent is that we're getting the best of both worlds, we're going to make sure that, that our local youth have access, the ones who can't afford to pay, we're going to pay for them, the ones who are paying and are driving all the way out to West Omaha are going to have something locally that's going to be comparable that they can pay for, and in the end run, these people are going to be able to run it and make enough money for it to be worth their while to do it. That was how, I, very simplistically stated, stated, that's kind of how we, how we analyze it, if we use the TIF, we get the TIF back from you guys, and then we, we reinvest that back in some of these projects coming up, it seems like a win-win from that perspective for all of us.
I guess, and, and again, I appreciate Matt, and, and I don't think any of us want the same thing we have with, with Bass Pro.
Yeah.
That, that type of deal, so, right, I, I agree with that. Do you think that for Fieldhouse USA to have these types of agreements with other people, that they're not willing to pay rent here to you guys, is that, is, do you think that Iowa West got the best deal for Iowa West and the community?
I, I think we did, we had smart people on our committee, including a couple of bankers, we talked to multiple providers from around the country, we invited them in here, and we, we believe that based on what we heard and what our due diligence, that we've got a good deal that's going to be a win, well, we've got a deal that's going to be a win for the community, that's what we believe, and we hope, in addition to the recreation piece of this, the payoff is some kind of additional economic stimulation for the Mid America Center, you know, that's a super win if we get that. If we just get the, the Fieldhouse, then it's a win in our minds, it's a super win if it stimulates other, other economic development down there, and we actually believe it will, and part of our belief behind that is watching what happened in Frisco. Now, I know there were lots of starts and stops with Frisco, and, you know, this is a burgeoning sort of industry, if you will, but the fact of the matter is, is all you have to do is drive around down there, and you can see that that whole area has been developed, at least partially because of the Fieldhouse. So we're, we're taking a gamble that in fact, that's what's going to happen down here, and we're going to get some other interests because of it. We, we also see, we've had, we're just beginning this, but we've had a couple of niblets at the, at the spine for facilities that would be in there that would complement what's already, what, what the Fieldhouse is bringing, so.
Right.
That's our intention as a foundation, is to continue to drive the development in the spine in a way that would help bring additional people who would be attracted to what's happening there already.
And I want to make sure that, and for me, and I'll say it again at the council meeting, that the need is off the charts, the council, the Council Bluffs needs this, if you guys built two, they'd both be full.
That's what someone else said, well, I don't think that's going to happen.
Right, I don't, I don't think it is either, but I, I think they'd both be full, so the need is there, I just, you know, you told, you told us that you had, you know, you've been working on this for over four years.
I think it's, I, I exaggerate sometimes.
Let's say two.
I, let's say a two and a half, it seems like forever.
You know, and, and, you know, for me personally, just getting on council, and, and I know, I don't, these guys have been on here a little longer than me, but I've had less than six months to look at this, so for, and I appreciate you doing, of doing that, but to sign a deal like this and less, you know, I, I wouldn't even know the time, I mean, I know we got it back in February, or whenever we got it, I just, I want to make sure that I'm doing the due diligence, because like you said, you worked on it for two and a half years.
You bet.
I have very small amount of time compared to that to, to make sure that this is a-
I appreciate that.
A winner for everybody.
I do, I appreciate that. One lesson that we learned from this is, and that as we move forward in partnership with the city on other projects, is we will be inviting you as council more frequently in the process to come and get more details, so we learned that lesson, and we will make sure that that happens as we move forward on other projects.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
One of the other math things I did, because we'd gotten comments from the public that there were people that, in Frisco, that of much higher financial means than are here, and so our kids couldn't afford to pay it, so Roger had mentioned two weeks ago that he went on the website, and it's $60 an hour to rent a court. Typically, on a basketball or volleyball team, you'd have somewhere between 10 and 15, you, in order to practice, you need six and six for volleyball, and you need five and five for basketball, so, but a typical team's 15, and so at $60, that's four bucks a player for practice, we can ask the, the Fieldhouse gentleman tonight, but I think he said 40 or 45 in our market was what he estimated, and then that's $3 per player, so not a huge amount of money, I, I get it that, to some people, that may be significant, but to entertain your child for an hour, $3 is typical for a movie or more.
You can get it to a movie for three bucks?
Well, I can now, because I get a senior discount.
Senior discount? Yeah, I think, but, but one of the, the biggest concern that I've gotten from people at the Council of School District was just what you're saying, there are people who can't afford the $3, and so we're, we're saying, we'll make sure they get, that, that those teams get in there.
And there's no limit, there's no set dollar amount limit as to what you, because I know Fieldhouse and you are committed both, right?
There's no set limit on what we would give?
Right, like.
So the first 10 kids get it, but?
Oh, no, no.
There's no set limit on, and I know you said every kid, there's nobody going to turn away, but.
That's a direct quote from Gary Oliver, which he, I have in writing from him, that every kid, so he's, he's committed to doing this. What I thought we would do next on the scholarship is to get Jeff Novotny and some of those guys who are involved in this whole thing, and get him, and then bring them in and have them talk about, how should this work, how should we figure this out so that we know that the kids that you know need help get it?
Yeah, because I know there's roughly almost 6,000 kids on, on free or assisted lunch in this, in this town, so.
And we're not just talking about basketball, we're talking about basketball, volleyball, perhaps wrestling.
Right, mats above, raised above.
Cheer.
Yeah.
Cheer.
Cheer.
Cheerleading, yeah.
And they do, at their facility in Frisco, I remember him talking a lot, that they are licensed daycare provider there, and they do summer camps and everything for the kids, do they plan to do that in this facility?
I, I believe they're, they're hopeful of doing that, they're planning on setting the market, I think that's another possible use for sports-related summer camps for the scholarship program as well.
That's what I was wondering, because I know, and doesn't the Y do the same thing with scholarships for kids in need?
I'm sure that.
Yeah, that's like what we just did a big fundraiser for, Chonge Competence Campaign, and it supplements scholarships so that they can do sports and.
Not necessarily for daycare, but for a Y membership.
Well, or even just for specific things like the sports, if they need, if they want to play on like a sports arena, the teen programs and that stuff that's above and beyond the normal.
So they can probably get some information even on how the Y does it and makes it available, so if it's been successful for them.
Sorry, the vast majority of not-for-profits do those kinds of things on a slide-scale basis, because there is a reason to have families have skin in the game, and even if you're only paying a dollar, so that would be my view of how we would organize this, is some kind of a scale that said, if you're at this level, then you participate at this level, and if you're at this level, you don't have to give anything, because you just don't have that kind of pressure.
And you could even partner with somebody like teammates or something that's already done the work, you know what I mean, that you know they need that, so you don't have to do that work.
Right, yeah.
Well, and you mentioned that, that there'll be some, some work to be done yet as to how this is going to be managed and, and put forward, and I, I would just urge a, a continuing partnership with the city on this, because at, at least in getting the word out, communicating this to the public, because in the hundreds of emails that, that we were receiving about this, I kind of got the, the impression that a lot of people were misinterpreting this as a city park or a city facility, and it's, and it's not.
Not, no.
And so, so expectation management going forward will be, will be important in this so that they understand when they walk in the door, here's, here's what you can expect, and, and here's what we're trying to do on your behalf.
Yeah, I think that's why we need to get the community involved in outlining how the scholarship, and work with Gary and figure out exactly what are they, do they have, will they make available, and then how do we augment that for the very, very poor.
Pete, I had some people ask in the community, who, who are the investors in the hotel, besides Iowa West?
Well, Iowa West is negotiating, we may have a equity position in the hotel, but that hasn't been finalized, the capital structure hasn't been finalized, one of the gentlemen from Cedar Rapids will be here tonight to answer specific questions about that, and I think that he and, I think, if I remember correctly, there's two additional investors in the hotel.
And do we know who those are, I mean?
Um, I do, I, I can't call their names right off the top of my head, I know you know that some of the investors were involved in Great Wolf Lodge down in Kansas City, and took that, they took that whole corporation public after it was successful, and part of that was, so they, they have had a hotel group where they've done, and actually there, if you look at their data, they are award-winning hotelers, they've won tons of awards for hotels, they've got a list about, I don't know, 10 pages long or so, that was awards that they've won, which I, I meant to bring a copy of that to you, I, if I don't have it with me, I'll get a copy of that.
Can, can we have that for the council meeting, the names of who are involved?
Yes.
Thank you.
They have a list of all their awards.
Stop the presses.
So disruptive today.
Very disruptive today.
Casey's calling, his pizza's ready.
You're making me hungry.
Any other questions?
I want to make sure Roger's done, and then I've just got really, I was just like, so, are there any other things, I mean, are there things that Dick could be drawing up between now and council meeting that we want to say that this is what would need to be in there so that we can move forward with something on, you know, based on these things being in there?
I guess for me, that kind of begs the questions, what, what, what happened to our inputs that, that were submitted, I, Dick kind of alluded to that, but when we left off the last meeting, we were invited to submit inputs, what, how we thought the agreement could be improved, I know a number of us did submit inputs, and I, I didn't hear anything back after that, so I don't know if there was some redrafting made, submitted, or if it was rejected or didn't get transmitted, just.
There's not been a new draft of the agreement, I have forwarded those emails to Pete for review, and if you wish to readdress those questions in front of them, this is the time to do that.
So what we would do then is for the things that, even for the things that Pete has already offered to us, we need to include that though, tonight, like we, we need to have you include that, right, because it's not in there, so like the change from?
I, I will throw a punch list based upon our conversation here, but right now, I've got incorporate the language from the two resolutions into the existing agreement, make it clear in the existing agreement that the city would have no responsibility for the parking, parking of the hotel, and that the next item would just be that we'd get a, another resolution from the foundation addressing, guaranteeing the performance of Mac Ventures under the agreement.
And that the hotel would buy their parcel for expansion.
Yeah, that's not, that's not an option, right?
And then also the change from 18 to 15 percent, I mean years, sorry.
Yeah.
That would need to be in there too, right?
That's the language out of the, out of the resolution.
Was that in the, I don't think that was in the resolution.
It wa, it was not, we, we actually, we said that in the, yes, we did, we said in the resolution that we would reduce the TIF from 18 to 15 years, yes, it was.
So that wasn't in there?
But in the resolutions, it does say, and I'm just asking from my own information, it says that the Iowa West Foundation is working on this through its limited liability company, Mac Ventures LLC, does that address the concern, or are you want something more specific that basically says that we're, we'll cover it?
Yeah, yeah, a personal guarantee, as, as it were, yeah. Because normally, a shareholder of an LLC, even if you're the only owner, you're not liable for the debts of the LLC, that's one of the advantages.
Corporate guarantee.
Yeah, corp, yeah, you're right, it'd be a corporate guarantee, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I know I asked in, in the email to Dick about the closing of Arena Way.
Yeah, Arena Way is not going to be closed, the, the plan right now, there is no, the last conversation that we had with Don and with the hotelers was that we would not be building anything across Arena Way that would cause it to be closed. That is my understanding, and that actually was your recommendation, that we not look at that right now, is that correct, am I misspeaking? You talking about the, the thing that went from the hotel over?
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about in front of the Fieldhouse?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, the development plan that, that was submitted, reviewed by our office, approved by this council, January, February, shows Arena Way being relocated slightly to the south, because the Fieldhouse is going to be built pretty much on where Arena Way is. So, we are going to have a continuous ownership of Arena Way in the plat, and, but the area in front of the Fieldhouse is to be a pedestrian way, with bollards on one end and bollards on the other end. Now, there is still continued circulation around the Fieldhouse itself on the west side, the north sou, side, and quite frankly, the side between the Fieldhouse and the Mac, which will connect again to Arena Way. One of the things I think that we will have to do, once we get through this, is that we will have to have some sort of occupancy agreement or lease about that particular piece of property, and, you know, what's in there, what the standards are in there, who maintains it, those types of things. So, that's my understanding.
So will we, because right now cars can drive on it, so it would be so cars will not be able to.
Sometimes, and I think I've told you before, that's my cut through, I, I cut through by hooters and cut through the middle of the parking lot and then go around the Arena Way, and I tell you, three out of four times, it's open, one out of four times, it's blocked with barricades.
We don't have traffic studies on it, or numbers, but I would say it's fairly light. But again, I, they are proposing that, and I thought it was agreed to, that we would have essentially a pedestrian way, some enhanced landscaping, some other hardscape-type features in front of that, and Pete is correct in saying that the hotel, the parcel is big enough to accommodate a hotel and to accommodate their own parking on property that they will ultimately own, so, and since they own it, they have to maintain it.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council on 4-8?
No.
Thank you, we'll see you at 7 o'clock.